Morning, everybody.
Morning.
So, David Worthington.
Aye.
122, David Lee, District Court, Liberty County. We do have a forum established in the District Court of House, Commissioner Arthur is present today, Commissioner Whitmire is present by way of zoom, and so is Commissioner Wilson, present by way of zoom. And Leon, how's your voice today? It was about to go out the other day.
Ah, it's better. It's better.
Okay. I'm sure Karen would appreciate if it did go out. Anyway, Mr. Hunter Mueller is with us, Fire Department's office. Mr. Poston with the county attorney's office, and Angela with the court is with us as well. I believe we got everybody else. So, we do have this four court this morning, so if we'd all rise, please release our pledges to the flag and for the police indication.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the representative of this state, one nation, indivisible, and infinite.
Please face the Texas flag.
I am the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, America, one and indivisible.
Father, we thank you for this day and your many blessings. Thank you for this beautiful, beautiful Tuesday, Lord. We continue to ask for wisdom for this court that they do things that honor you, Lord, and help our community. We ask that you touch the direction of our country, the direction of our county. Father, we just ask that you continue to bless us, Lord. This is election time, Father. I ask that you touch each candidate in this room and remind them, Father, that we do have to live together after this election. We give you praise. Jesus is not in there.
Amen.
Amen.
I would say it was probably worthy of a sermon on that last. We do have to live together. And we do have to get along and have teamwork, because we always have had. So, that's what my big wish for the election season is, to continue to teamwork together. Okay. Notices and proclamations. I believe we got anything to be ministered proclaim today. But we do have one, a lady who came in, Republican Tom Ed. Janice Holt is a candidate for House District 18, State Representative, and she's come this morning and asked if she had a moment to speak. Ms. Holt, please come up and visit with us. And, uh, very much so. Come on up here.
I got her close by me.
On that line, I think.
You're close to Greg, because he's about 10 years younger than you.
Good morning, Judge, and Commissioners, you that are online also. Thank you for the opportunity, and all you who are here for the court meeting today. My name is Janice Holt, and I'm running for State Representative from House District 18. I live in Harden County, which will be a new part of House District 18. If you're not familiar, you know that House District 18 currently is made up of Walker County, San Jacinto County, and Liberty County. But the new House District 18 will be made up of Harden County, Liberty County, San Jacinto County, and East Montgomery County, and that will take effect in January of next year. So, I am running for State Representative. I have been active in the Republican Party for almost two decades and want to bring that experience and knowledge to the, to the State House in Austin. And I believe in liberty, being here in liberty. I just love the, the story of liberty and the history of liberty. But I do believe in liberty, personal liberty, and will fight every day for those values so that we can stay a free state. You know, the saying that says, you know, "How Texas goes, so goes the nation." And so, we have to guard our rights and liberties very carefully, and I will fight every day for those. So, I appreciate your consideration. I have a website, which is holdfortexas.com, and it's also the same thing on Facebook, if you're on Facebook. And I look forward, once I am elected, to working with this Commissioner's Court and all the Commissioner's Courts in the district. Thank you again for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate you coming by and seeing us.
Thank you so much.
And best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Judge Chambers, you're here this morning. How are you, sir?
Good.
Good to see you.
Thank you. I think there's an item on the agenda I was summoned to address.
Great. Always good to have you come back for the committee test. Next item on the agenda, declare conflicts of interest. And is there any item on the agenda where we have conflict, one of the commissioners or myself speak now, or you can declare the conflict of interest at that particular agenda item? The body. Okay. We'll move on. Consent agenda is next. If y'all all have the opportunity to look over consent agenda, and if so...
I have the little amendment. I finally, I finally filled my last two positions. I have the oath of office for our two new people. They were sworn in yesterday, so I didn't get to get it on the agenda, but it's an oath of office for Princess Marks and Stephanie Wallace.
Princess Marks. Okay.
Yeah, to add to the list.
Kimmy. Can you have any questions?
No questions.
Angela? None at all? Okay. No add-ons?
With the one addition, I'm sure we're through this consent agenda. Second.
Got a motion from Greg. Second. Bruce to approve. Say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Thank you. You drive along. Greg, your agenda. Bruce, it looks like you're getting all of your interlocal agreements talked out for the rest of the year.
I've got, yeah, but I have to use ready to sign.
Good. Let's get started. Number one, interlocal agreement between, one, D.C.I.D., number five, here in one year. And I won't go through the whole dissertation, as you would call it, because they're the same on every one, but I'll do the first one. One year to cooperate mutually in maintaining streets, road conditions, recreational areas to provide better service to the public and reduce expense by avoiding costs and duplication of equipment. That's your standard interlocal agreement that you do every year.
Sales.
Questions, comments, entertain a motion.
Ready to approve. Second.
Got it. Motion from Greg, and I'm gonna give that to Leon, since there's a little delay there. Same by Leon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Number two, interlocal agreement between Liberty County Precinct 1 and the City of Devers for the same reasons as noted in agenda item number one. Motion to approve. A motion to agree. Second, Leon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries. Number three, consider approving interlocal agreement between Liberty County Precinct 1 and City of Liberty for the same reasons as noted.
I can motion to approve.
Second, David. Okay. Mr. Whitmire made the motion, saying by Greg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Number four, consider approving interlocal agreement between Liberty County Precinct 1 and City of Days End.
I can motion to approve.
Mr. Whitmire, you second.
Second.
Second, Greg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, consider approving interlocal agreement between Liberty County Precinct 1 and Liberty Independence School District for the same reasons as noted.
I can motion to approve.
Mr. Whitmire, second. Leon, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, our business inspections, Mr. Douglas, over in the engineering office, consider approved, draw number 11, pay request number five, Gulf Coast, $407,698.74. David?
Good morning, Your Honor. Gentlemen of the, this is our turning night. We took no action last time because we needed to get some detail forth out with Commissioner Arthur. Those details have now been worked out. We're ready to proceed. These payments are made against some work on County Road 2071 and 2850, and this is part of the GLO grant. Of this amount, there is $111,175.19 of local match money that will be coming out of Commissioner Arthur's funds. We ask you to approve this.
I can motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Bruce, second, David to approve. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next.
Thank you.
Number seven, Mr. C, consider approve the proposal from Reba Kissner, Robert Kissner of San Diego Pass, Consultants Incorporated for Geotechnical Engineering Services for the Northwest Annex Project in the amount of $7,300. Harold?
Yeah, this is the same firm used for the Sheriff's Office, Geotechnical, and we're gonna use them on the Northwest Annex.
Okay. I can motion to approve. Motion for Bruce. Second, from David, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. I think that was David.
That's what I'm really hearing.
Yeah, okay. Number eight, from, from the Live Barter Group, our tax attorneys, consider approve bids on delinquent tax properties. We have Seeread, it's offering number 47566, $1,501. Mr. Coleman, offering on multiple properties, starting at 63114, looks like 63127, the total of $50,000. T. Borrow, on pit number 51692, for $18,000. R. Finley, on pit number 60455, for $5,000. P. Lee, on property ID number 60475, $12,334. Mr. Stevenson, Hugh Stevenson, property number 68898, for $16,327. Number seven was C. Russell, pit number 16400, for $4,039.99. Number eight property was J. Hillman, that number is 44361, for $7,300. And Ellen Baldwin, property number 53705, for $8,000. And we have Jay Metlin, a whole bunch of pit numbers, 61605, inclusive all the way to 52388. Total number of those properties, the bid is $6,210. And Bruce, where are those properties located?
Those are over there, I believe, in New River.
That's what, though.
Lake Estates. These lots are valued at $100 a piece. It's a, it's not, to my knowledge, in a flood area. I've looked at all these properties. We had it on court last time because of technicality, we tabled it.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve all of these bids today.
Okay. You think they're, have we cleaned up in the description then?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion.
I second for Bruce.
Second, Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. And appreciate, you know, getting together the Live Barter District now so we know exactly what they're disposing of, or actually putting back on the taxes.
Getting back on the tax rolls.
Exactly right. Okay. Number nine, from Emergency Management, Ms. Visser, consider approve applying for a grant through General Land Office for the fiscal year 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Funding Opportunity. I did have a chat with Krista about this, and she is on another meeting right now, so just to send you over the details. And, uh, the items for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, takes about a year to gather the data and create the plan to send to FEMA for approval before it can be adopted. This plan is used to require for future events, funding for disasters and mitigation projects of sort. So, that's something to think about if we're gonna be able to apply for mitigation funding in the future. We need to have this in place. The plan is a five-year plan, and ours expires late 2023, which is why we're working on it now. Makes sense. There's grant funding available to assist with that of the plan. We're asking to go out for a grant to help. Also asking the court to approve the work with HGAC on gathering the data and preparing the plan as they have done in the previous years. So, I would ask the court to be allowed their consideration to approve this measure.
I can motion.
They got a motion from Leon. Is Greg gonna second that one?
Yeah.
Second, Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 10, pretty much likewise, Austin Emergency Management is requesting court approval to work with HGAC on gathering all the data for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and as previously outlined, the reason why, I would ask the court's consideration to approve this as well.
I can motion to approve. Second.
David, second from Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 11, from Mr. Douglas, consider approve the final plan for Santa Fe subdivision, section 13.
Yes, sir. We have a request from Colony Bridge to approve the final plan for Santa Fe, section 13. L.J.A. has reviewed everything, has looked through the construction documents, the drainage documents, and they've issued a clean response on this. So, this morning, we're gonna ask you to approve the final plan for section 13 of the Santa Fe subdivision.
I can motion to approve. Got a motion from Bruce.
Okay. Second.
Second, Greg, Greg just barely reached to it, Leon, those two.
Man.
Satellite cost me the way. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. That ain't good.
Okay. Mr. Whitmire is going to sustain his effort to do the conflict, is that correct?
Yeah, I do my work for the homeowners association down there.
Okay. All right, we got you. Thank you. So, that motion passes by a vote of three, four, and one to stay.
Gentlemen, if you don't mind, hang around after the meeting intends, we'll get these my lawyer signed off. Thank you, good.
Thank you.
Remind me again.
Okay. We'll get it roped out.
Yeah. As I run out.
Two rams of a hooey. There you go. Number 12, from Mr. C, consider approve purchase of dispatch consoles and nice IP logging solution in the amount of $1,264,939.17 from Motorola through HGAC contract RA 0521 for the Sheriff's Office. And Harold, this is just in time, I believe, because they're gonna be needing to put this in pretty quick.
Yeah, we put this on here. Jay, Stephanie, Wayne, and I met with Kenny Burns probably a month ago, maybe?
Yeah.
And we were looking, you know, he had a conceptual budget when we started, but some things we started seeing were gonna be a lot less, some things weren't sure. So, he was, he was gonna gather all information to get back with us, he hadn't yet, what money we have left in these category expenses. I'm not sure where we have on this, but, but you're right, we need to get started on this. This is HGAC contract for the dispatch consoles, and I'm not sure Angela knows if it's in there or not. Like I say, we haven't got the budget back, but, I mean, we're gonna have to have the dispatch console. I think our best deal, ten across.
I'll agree. Chairman, any other comments you'd like to make about the console? Are you happy with it?
I'm, I'm happy with it.
You're, okay.
I can motion to approve. Second.
Motion for Bruce. Second, Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you. Harold, thank you, the deputy incumbent for getting it popped out. Number 13, from Mr. C's office. Stephanie, you're gonna present this today, consider approve recommendations to award bid number 22-04 for body armor. That probably need...
This is for the Sheriff's Office. It's a term contract that will be for one year with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods for cop stop body armor. The apparent low bidder was Midwest Armor, but they're, what they did did not meet our specifications.
Recommendation?
Recommendation to award a cop stop for body armor.
Any questions about court? Any consideration to discuss?
I can recommend a recommendation. Second.
Motion for Greg, second for Bruce to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 14, consider approve the five-year agreement for tagers for a total amount of $21,947.80 for the Axon Enterprise Incorporated by Board Contract, 603-20, from the Sheriff's Office.
That's all there is for that one. That, that is the total for five-year period is $21,947. We just need you to approve the contract.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Greg.
Second.
Leon to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Likewise, next.
That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 15, consider approve a plan to upgrade the audio and visual technology in all county and district courtrooms, Jack Martell administration building, and the courtroom interface at Liberty County Jail. The plan would include an official upgrade in the second court courtroom, which is this one, allow for the recording of Liberty County Commissioners' court proceedings. The plan would be submitted for funding through the American Rescue Plan. Okay. Well, come visit with us.
Hello, good morning.
How are you doing?
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Your Honor.
Well, tell everybody who you are.
I'm Randy. I'm the South Texas Account Manager with BIS Digital, and we would like to offer you some audiovisual updates to your four courtrooms, as well as the Jack Martell Building, and install video arraignment in your jail as well. So, just quickly about BIS Digital, we've been a company since 1985. We serve almost exclusively courts, child advocacy centers, and law enforcement. So, that's what really sets us apart from other agencies. And what we're doing is a very general overview, is updating some basic audiovisual equipment, microphones, monitors, and sound systems. And we're also going to offer you some newer technology that allows you to integrate your microphones and sound systems and install cameras, higher resolution images with Zoom. So, you have a clean video conference, clean audio and video going out, and then clean audio and video coming in as that audio comes in with sound system and the open-ended monitors. The one thing that is a little bit different is the jail installation, and what that involves is actually installing microphone, monitor, camera, and the same sort of technology that allows easy Zoom function and integration, all in case of a customized enclosure for safety. Any questions that I can answer?
I'm ready to look at it.
For total, for all the projects, it's gonna be between $375,000 and $400,000. Between $375,000 and $400,000 for all projects.
Harold, do we go out for bids for this?
Uh, we're, we're right around the planning stage, I think. I'm not sure of all the judges that signed off on this. I think we're just getting a vote from them, then we're gonna be all about order.
Really, we just got to step on this today. I'm gonna motion, we're moving tables until we have chat, comes up with all the judges, make sure we've kind of got everything that they wanted in this plan. Yeah. Are y'all on the call?
We are. We are DIR, DIR co-op as well, and we currently have some existing equipment in this courtroom as well, so we've been working with the county.
For the record, what we asked her to do was throw the kitchen sink at it, show us everything that they got that's available. What's in there is a lot of options that the judges in the different courtrooms can choose from. It's a shame we don't have Wes in here, because Wes has really hit me up about the fact that he has zero technology right now, no way to Zoom, no way to take care of his needs. Judge Chambers, you can talk about how bad it is in the jail. Nick, stand up. Let him know how hard these Zoom hearings are.
From my standpoint, you know, Zoom kind of, got dropped on us when COVID hit, right? We had to just kind of scramble and get things going. These are, I'd like to say, these are like a hybrid temporary setup. When she came in, we just wanted to get different options of more permanent installations. Currently, the jail had just like a typical television with a small computer, you know, any, you know, any issues could be brought up. Whoa, there was a situation. This is more of a permanent fixture and just more integration and getting all the courtrooms on the same page so that everybody has the same functionality, it can be run the same. It's no new learning curve to anyone, because everybody's already adapted to Zoom very, very well. This is just more additional supportive microphone, just better recording technology, better heightened definition video, just for, you know, for records and just Zooming and getting something. It's just upgrading our, our...
We'll talk to this, good.
And again, we, we just kind of snowballed and just started getting this ball rolling. That's all we're doing.
So, why don't we plan this for a workshop where we can all look at this and answer questions?
Not that I want to.
I understand. That would be, I think it's, everybody agrees it's something we need.
Yeah.
To make sure everybody's on board and exactly what we're looking at, I would like the opportunity to study on.
Okay. Well, let's put together. Leon and David, y'all have any comments?
Well, I think what we need to do is approach each individual court, let them make the determination of what they, what they want and what they don't want, and then we move from there.
That's what the plan does, Commissioner. It allows them to pick what they want out of the options in the plan. It's not dictating to anybody what they have to install or not install. It's just a bunch of options for them to choose from.
Yeah, this wasn't, this wasn't asking y'all to approve the purchase of it, it was just that, is Commissioners' Court on board and doing this or looking at it, your motive is in those six, so it's, so it was just to make sure y'all are okay using American Rescue Plan funds, and this is not even an approval of the system.
Yeah, just to move forward to, to try to adapt it, you know, and try to get new technology. Nobody's asking you to approve a set contract right now.
Harold. 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 Come up if you would. I was gonna say, I like Professor Carvasky's idea, set it for a workshop. Preliminary, appreciate everybody being here, but a workshop where we know what we're gonna talk about, and I, I appreciate a workshop on the matter.
Yeah, because I think we are all in degrees. This is something we need to do, how we proceed, and whether all the judges are on board with this.
Exactly.
And, and whether we have, no disrespect, but if whether there's more options and different companies.
And Mr. C, I appreciate that, and even though whatever this is approving, whether it's preliminary or whatever, it just might be better to have a workshop on the matter first. I agree. Thank you, Jim. All right. We do have a motion on, to table.
I think Leon had a question first.
Leon, you have a question?
Okay, this, this, this particular agenda, not saying that we're gonna purchase it, it's just saying that what we're doing is to prove you to go out and, and move forward with what the judges need, then we'll approve the purchasing.
Yeah, like Lee said, they, she said they put together everything you could imagine, but now it's a pick and choose, and then they'll come back with our final vote.
Okay. Would you still want, we have motion to table on the force right now.
And a second.
And we have a second.
Second.
Sounds like Bruce.
Who gave the motion?
Greg.
Greg.
Okay, so we got a motion to table and bring this into a workshop, is when I believe we were in that direction, okay? Which makes sense, and Judge Chambers even mentioned it, it does make sense. Yes. So, let's, let's say to the court, table this, and then we'll schedule a workshop and we'll all get together and put our history.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like you for coming. Thank you.
My pleasure.
I would like to say she's worked very hard. If you look at this thing, there's...
I, I am, I think it's a lot, must go through it.
That is a... That is a tremendous amount of work she did. She has looked at everything real carefully. She's got a lot of answers. Yeah, she really, really put a nice proposal together.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's call the question. Got a motion for Greg, second for Bruce to table this. Let's send it to court. Looks like it's for yes. All likewise, may we don't have you notice. We're gonna table this, we're gonna schedule a workshop and we'll put our heads together, okay? My excuse, Harold. Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in and telling us. Number sixteen for Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
Come on up, brother Rick. It's considered approved reimbursement for counterfeit twenty-dollar bill. They saved at Liberty County Dayton Tax Assessor's Office.
Yes, sir. Well, as the custom, we take in a lot of cash. I hadn't got the final tally. I know last January before this, we took, you know, we fined me. I haven't even add up all the receipts this year, but one twenty-dollar bill got by Ms. Betty in Dayton. The man caught it. Of course, as customary, when they pick up a bill, they don't give it back. So that starts our deposit by twenty dollars. Uh, so our standing tradition has come back to the county to ask for that to be reimbursed so that we can be even steven with it and disperse that out to the end. So as little as it sounds, it's still the process we go through. Fortunately, it was just one twenty-dollar bill. A lot of that's due to the machines we use, the eye, the training, and just a little bit of good luck that we didn't get any more, so.
Twenty dollars in debt out of five days?
No. Paying for your twenty dollars.
And we sure want to keep Angela and Blaine happy though. Motion for Bruce, second for Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, may I, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And don't say I yet.
Yes, sir.
Number seventeen. Consider approve an overpay refund in the amount of six thousand four hundred sixty dollars and three cents to taxpayer Charles Wiggins. Count number five five nine eight two contingent on the signature of Charles Wiggins' previous application.
Yes, sir. And again, according to tax code, any refund in excess of twenty-five hundred dollars has to come before the court. Of course, anytime we get a correction to be made, there's a process that fill out an application and then we run it through the courts. This particular case was on a piece of property that this taxpayer paid, but as part of a lease arrangement with the county, it was the county's responsibility to pay. So he paid all his taxes one time, then overlooked it and came in and realized, oh, I paid that one that's supposed to be paid by the county. So I have to go after the county to collect it, but we're gonna give it back to Mr. Wiggins with your group. I don't know where they live, so I think we'll go to find him.
I believe so. Let's say the court.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce, second. All favor say aye. Likewise, may I, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen, consider approve request from Sheriff Fredrick to reduce the Liberty County Sheriff's Office deputies' comp time down to two hundred hours using unused salaries from open positions. Come on up, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's talk about this a little bit.
All right, I just, comp time has always been, as you know, every budget, you're a pet peeve of mine. I like I, I think, in my opinion, it's not fair for the employees that work overtime to have to take off. For example, the deputies and investigators we just had on a double murder down there, got called out, they had comp time. After they do such a good job, by, by the way, warrants issued for the suspect. We pat them on the back and say, oh, you're over comp time, so take a week off, which puts them off not investigating and calling somebody else in. It's just like a vicious circle. Just a little bit of history. In oh-nine, the US Department of Labor came in and looked at the sheriff's office and said, oh, my gosh, your comp time is terrible. And Liberty County District Commissioners back then agreed to pay it down to four hundred hours for each employee. And the county wrote a check for a hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. US Department of Labor came in again in fifteen, well, I've been sheriff, and they said, uh, next time, that's not right. So the county wrote a check for sixty thousand nine hundred one dollars and twenty-nine cents. And since then, I've been every year or two trying to cut down. I started at four hundred, went to three fifty, three hundred, two fifty. These are in-house limits that we have. So I've got it down shooting for two hundred. And if I can get this approved today, I can go down to one fifty by giving the people the vacation and everything off. So I know that, as I said, the pet peeve was the comp time. Chief Martin, I was talking to him with Liberty PD and he said his officers make about ten thousand more a year because they pay overtime and there's so. I, I know this next budget commissioners, judge, commissioners, if y'all would consider making me a line item for overtime, I appreciate it. I know I can't do anything about that this year, but I was trying to get this down. Question?
Angela, do we? Where would this money be coming from?
It's coming from unused unused salary, right?
We had, yeah, we had open positions that we had unused, I guess.
Well, there is that unused salary position, and then the question becomes, why are those salaries? Why are those positions open? Which is why this comp time is happening. But if the money's there, yes, but beware that when you start pulling out of salary lines that are budgeted for actual salaries, you're basically shorting yourself, because next year, you know, we intend for those to be billized, too. So, um, you know, I, I think that's, it's a vicious cycle. I don't know where the end comes, but if you start drawing out of your salary line, I would just be cautious about that.
So it's something that we really need to address when it comes to budget time, because I mean, you can get a, a murder investigation or something at the end of alternate shift. You don't want to pull him off and put somebody new on there anyway.
Now, there was a couple of things that I didn't have clear detail on. One, on the twelve twenty-one Commissioners Court meeting, paid down comp time for the district attorney employee. Didn't say if it was over four eighty or whatever it is, it just said on a consent agenda to pay down employee comp time. And then another thing, I know Ms. Chambers has something in her budget, and I've never looked at your budget, Ms. Chambers, I don't know how you do it, but during election time for your workers that work, they get paid overtime. And I was just wanting, I know we can't do anything about overtime this cycle. I'm just trying to pay them the comp times of two hundred, so I could lower it to a hundred and fifty and keep giving them time off.
Yeah, the people in my office that work, and it's because they've been trained on election law, they usually assist the elections office, but it's paid out of a different salary line than mine. So, but they do get paid up because they are working overtime to, after they do the job here, to go work and close out the election job there. But I don't think the overtime is at, they get paid straight like all the other workers, right?
We don't do overtime in life.
It's just, they're getting paid like the other workers do
Yeah.
to, to work the election. They don't get overtime per se. I think it was back when.
I think it said approve and overtime pay or something. It might not, you know, I might have missed.
I make them take off like.
Sorry, I forgot about.
Right, we can't.
If, uh, with all these open positions that you have, if you've got them, if you've gotten them filled, you would be able to cut down on the comp time, correct?
That's correct. Right now, we have chief, I think we have five, five openings and there being background check right now. This TCO commissioner has made a lot more requirements on trying to hire somebody. There's a lot more paperwork, a lot more documentation, and we're getting that done. Actually, it took us a pretty good while to get in the system to do it. We offered the job to three people and two of them already taken other jobs. So we have, uh, we're getting the system down, but we have background checks being done to fill those openings. Yes, sir. And hopefully, hopefully.
If you have individuals that are possibly committed to these openings, but we utilize that money to pay this overtime, how they're gonna be, uh, how, how's their salary's gonna come in?
When I'm not paying overtime next year, I'd just like a line item, Commissioner, and it was surely, we could figure out about what's used every year and ask for about that much in the budget to be able to pay the overtime and we could monitor that and make sure that the people didn't spend that much time and we didn't use up all the budget. I think looking back and Angela, you can correct me if I, I think the sheriff's office has pretty much stayed in budget every year, I think.
You know, I looked the other day. Starting salary for Liberty County Sheriff's Deputy's fifty-three thousand three thirty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Harris County Deputy's starting salary is about fifty-two thousand.
Right.
Yeah, so I think we're doing pretty good.
But we're, we're doing good for all departments, Judge. I know that appreciate everything that you've done for the sheriff's office and, you know, keep saying I need one down, you did it, because I want my deputy to get everybody to get more.
That's begun, that's come to expect.
But an example on the salaries that I've used, and I've talked to Commissioner Arthur about this. You know, if I was to hire a ten-year person from another agency to come in as a deputy, my starting salary hourly would be twenty-four eleven. If he hired a ten-year person to come in, that was excellent and backhoe, whatever he did, the best top, top guy he could get, he'd pay them twenty-five dollars an hour, which is more money than my deputies would make. And we have to go to an academy and be certified, they execute education, everything else. If he hired a ten-year person to come in as a foreman, any of them, all that, they make sixty-two thousand. And if I hired a ten-year person to come in as a captain, they'd make fifty-nine. So that's why I need all this other is to get my, I'm not fussing what they make, nobody makes. I just want my guys to make more.
Oh, dude.
I mean, really.
I think since twenty fifteen, where you started out, when I walked in the door, deputies were making about thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six. Thirty-six, Jake.
Did you ever, you've never watched that Judge Bond movie where they click and it flips the pen, they click and soon it blows up, I'm waiting for it to blow up.
So, so Sheriff.
Leon, you have a comment. Leon, what was it?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They were, they were sitting just a little over thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, twenty fifteen?
Yeah. And now we're, now they're sitting at fifty-three, three thirty.
What were the road and bridge commissioner? What they, what were they back in fifteen and where are they now?
Back then, top pay for an operator throughout all the commissioners was eighteen dollars an hour.
And so they're up to, top pays twenty-five now?
Yeah.
Okay. But then, I don't know, when everybody, I'm just, let's get back to the to the, to the comp time deal here, if we can get back to comp time. Just another statistic, sixty of my commissioned officers are under the two hundred right now. We work to get those down. Every month, I send out to the sergeants and the captains, hey, we need to get this one down, we need to get this one down, and the way to get them down is vacation time, we send them around. So I have nineteen that I'd like to get down to the two hundred so I could go to one fifty.
This is a problem that we do need to address. We can't have these guys working overtime without paying them, without some, some kind of reward for it. Crime's not a nine-to-five occupation. It's your officers have to. So I don't care if you had a full staff, you would still, we would still have officers that are in comp time.
Right.
I just, uh, I make a motion to approve.
I'm gonna on both sides of the fence. And I can promise you, you gotta work better receptive court than we had back. And I know it'll keep you open just so you can pay overtime, but I like the idea of getting these guys paid down.
It was budgeted, so I figured I could kind of move it over.
So I'm gonna say it that way.
You got a motion, Bruce, second for Greg. And Angela, basically what this does is delete one position to fill it. Is that correct?
For this year?
For this year?
I don't know if it would delete an entire position, not an eighteen thousand dollars.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, it would probably prevent him from hiring somebody, but they leave another position, but you still got.
It's just gonna borrow from the salaries that are unused.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just not for deleting. I mean, our guys need to be paid. I don't, I don't disagree with that, but what we're fixing to do is delete open positions for probably eight months. I would rather see.
No, 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 no.
It's only eighteen thousand dollars if a deputy was.
It's eighteen thousand dollars as well. Yeah, I'm sorry Angela's talking. I didn't mean to talk over her.
And if, and if you had five positions open and it started in September, there's eighteen thousand dollars that should have already been paid. So it's not gonna affect your hiring or anything, filling you up to rest of term.
Angela, did you? Kim?
Um, sure, I'm great with it. I don't know that we'll be able to get it on this coming paper. We have a lot of changes in our office. But for sure, we'll get it on the next one. The other thing I was just gonna comment on is that my hat's off.
Let me get this correct. Sheriff.
Sorry.
You're not actually deleting positions. You're just using money, just using money from the first four months of the budget.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I, all right, thank you.
Yes.
But the Department of Labor has dictated that anything over four hundred and eighty hours for law enforcement has to be paid down. And comp time has to be paid down and two hundred and forty hours for non-law enforcement. So, um, you know, the, the cap on the four hundred and eighty is, is a requirement. And so anytime anyone goes over that, it has to be paid.
Yeah.
But the two hundred dollars is beneficial, especially whenever someone just terminates, because then there's a huge payoff. You're sitting at four hundred and eighty hours for all these guys. So, I mean, that, it's helpful in that way.
I'm gonna see you get down to a hundred and fifty like Sheriff was talking about.
Yeah.
Maybe eventually you get down to fifty.
Yes, sir. My plan is to go down every, every cycle.
Well, you know, the, the choice of words in saying delete a position, I use that for a reason. That was to get in discussion, go ahead and share it, get some discussion.
That's why I'm speaking to Quinn, Judge.
All right, so we have a motion for Bruce, second for Greg, for Alex. No further discussion, hopefully. Let's send it to court.
I'm in five.
I'm five, five. Okay. Got four eyes, no. Thank you, gentlemen. Don't sit down yet, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. I'll sit over here.
Actually, three more. Okay. Consider approve reducing, number nineteen. Consider approve reducing Liberty County Sheriff's Jail correctional officers' comp time down to in-house limit of three fifty hours using unused salaries from open positions. I know you've got a load of open positions there.
Good, as you know, it's even a PTCJ's got, I mean, for some reason, COs are just in demand.
Well, what happens is, an oil patch is booming, everybody goes to the old patch. One year we had the railroads boom. Everybody cut around to Indian Pacific, Three Pacific, and everybody else back in the old days. And that's what happens when the economy is great. People go where the economy pays and unfortunately, custodial officers such as what you have in the jail, what T E C J has.
Yeah, I should have told you, Frank, because you really helped out Commissioners Court. You've given pay raises more than they were making. I thought for sure we'd have a list of people. We do have, I think, seven or eight people that just started, so.
So this is much the same description?
Same thing.
Because I don't think this is a unique problem for Liberty County. Everybody gets, tries to get higher quality people.
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, let's send it to court. Leon, you have any discussion on this one or?
No, no, no.
Okay, got a motion from David to approve the second. Second for Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, may I, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank y'all again.
Number twenty, consider approve amending. I'll put my glasses on for this. The stamp pay policy for county law enforcement officers that was approved by Liberty County Commissioners Court September fifth, twenty twenty to include correctional officers. whose assigned duties require a license issued by the Tax Commission of Law Enforcement and give credit for years of service for dual commission Liberty County Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement personnel that are transferred to work in the jail division and licensed correctional officers that are transferred to work in the sheriff's office.
That's a lot of words, but. But I'm dual commissioning several of my officers, I have deputies, I have the law enforcement commission that are, um. I guess you'd say requiring, suggesting, volunteering, that they get a correctional officer commission also. And vice versa, I've got two people now that are correctional officers in the academy to be law enforcement officers. I planned on, uh, when Sheriff Stewart was the sheriff, he had people working, they had the jail back then, they had people working the jail, and he took them from the jail and put them on the road. It was all under the sheriff's department and everything carried over, so what happened is, uh. This last budget, there was not a line item, uh, on the, that's the next agenda. On this one here. Uh, the officers, correctional officers are required to pass a test, they go through the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. They're considered officers, they have the authority to use lethal force if they need to, they do, uh, discipline and everything else. So, my asking, uh, months ago, I asked Matthew about this, but just to get them to where, uh, they would be qualified for that eligibility. Uh, there's nobody really there except the warden, the jail, uh, administrator, that even qualifies. All the guards that are there are not qualified for three to four years, so.
Correctional officer.
Correctional officer, yes, sir. So I was just going to add correctional officers so I could move them back and forth without a penalty. I tried to move, uh, one of my investigators to a major position and he lost all his eligibility if that would have been done, and so I left him as an investigator.
Descriptive names for employees and also for vendors. When I started with T C J in nineteen seventy-six. Uh, we call them convicts. And then, yeah, and then next thing it came to inmate, and then it came to offender. And I believe now they're calling them clients, so really, you know, there's just a myriad of names. As you look at it, you, you know, depending on what your custody level is, it's going to be into a safety environment or whatever, you know. But folks do look at this like guard. No, we, we call them correctional officers and our custodial officers either way, but then it's, uh, that's just a little history there, it's kind of funny how things evolve over the years.
Yes, sir, I'm behind it because I still call them inmates.
Right, yeah.
That's what they're losing if they go to the jail.
What they lose there, if, if I put a Liberty County Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Officer to a jail position right now, if I move them over to the jail budget. They lose their eligibility. They use their time.
Are you moving them to the jail, they're still under your budget, are you putting, are they moving, they go to the jail budget?
They go to the jail budget if I sign them over there.
So do they, do they go to jail, uh, salaries, Bobby?
Do they go to jail what?
Jail salary.
Yeah, that's correct, they go to jail salary. What happened on the one I was going to move is eligibility or a step pay. Would have put him up to what he was making, he'd take the move, but since he couldn't take the step pay with him. It reduced it and he was making less, so I didn't, I didn't transfer him.
What the issue is, it's the step pay policy, uh, uh, requires eligibility based on whether or not the position requires. A T coal license, so if, uh, if the position, you could have a, uh, you know, a T coal license, uh, i- uh, in a dispatch position. But because that dispatcher position doesn't require a T coal license, they wouldn't be eligible for step pay under this. So that, that's what the issue is, i- is, I think, uh, the sheriff's asking for an amendment to the step pay eligibility, uh, so that, uh, it's not quite so narrow.
What happens too, Judge and Commissioners, if I, if a deputy transfers from the sheriff's office to a constable's office, their eligibility goes with them. And they get to keep their years of service because they're Liberty County Law Enforcement.
Do you have, do you have any jail budgets officers budgeted?
No, sir.
Okay, so you, you, you want to have a couple of law enforcement people in the jail?
Correct, the major position, if I'd had step pay, I'm not going to make the move now, this is, uh, I've already got, I got it where I need him, but, uh. I don't have any positions for that, the major position was comparable salaries while I was going to move one over.
And then my question would be. One question that needs to be asked and addressed is, uh. We already have a set budget, so how would we be able to afford this, Angela?
Okay, good question, Commissioner, there is, I don't need any extra money, you like that part so far?
But that's because you want to intermingle the sheriff's permit and jail.
See, the sheriff, I'm over the deputies and everything, I'm also over the jail. They budgeted that thirty-five hundred dollars, it's in the sheriff's budget, that employee is now at the jail. I just am asking for a line item to transfer it over from the sheriff's office to the jail. It's not, not costing any money, we have it, and I just want it moved over. Uh, that's in the next agenda item, Commissioner, that's the next agenda item.
This one's just amending the.
This is just amending to include the correctional officers.
Yeah.
Are correctional officers required to have the same certification as the deputies?
Yes, they have to, they have to.
You just said that they weren't, I thought. But also, our third, whenever they were here, did they have?
They had.
I mean, you had your deputy.
They were commissioned officers, yes.
When, when did they have, they, why, why were you looking at two officers for jail?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to hit that on next budget, I've got it covered right now.
But right now, you weren't, you're talking about.
Right now, I just want to add correctional officers to the step.
Should we do that at budget time?
Well, I lose thirty-five hundred dollars, I've got an employee I would like to get it transferred over to.
Speaking just one employee, right Bobby?
That's the next agenda item, this agenda item, I just want to add correctional officers to the step time.
Well, so I, I'm a little confused, I think we might need to clarify here, so.
Yeah.
If we, if we, um, add all correctional officers to the policy, giving them step pay. Then that would require, correct, an increase in budget, right?
Yes, sir, no, not this year, not till next budget year.
Yeah.
And I don't have anybody, Matthew, that'll qualify for three to four years.
Right, exactly, so.
Unless I move somebody from the sheriff's department over there.
Yeah, right, and that's what you're trying to do, right, 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 so what, all you're really saying is, uh, to adjust the policy right now to say. Any T coal licensed peace officers assigned to the jail. And then perhaps in, at, you know, at a future date, it would be opened up more expansively to include all correctional officers.
But, yeah. That'd be good, yes, sir.
Okay, you're not talking about all correction, just the ones that are peace officers?
Just the ones that are T coal certified.
Yeah, peace officers.
They're, they're classified as correctional officers, the judge.
You want the correctional officers and the peace officers step back?
Right, correct. Uh, we already have peace officers, Commissioner, we already have peace officers covered, the way it talks about peace officers are covered, I'm just trying to get correctional officers covered.
Oh, okay. Can you see a problem with this?
It's confusing.
It is.
Um, so just so that I'm clear. You have currently no one at the jail that you want to pay step pay to.
Well, this will be covered on the next agenda item, I have one. That's at the jail that I want included for the step pay because they're at the jail, she was with the sheriff's department for several years. But the money is budgeted in the sheriff's office step pay. The jail budget does not have a step paid lineup, I'd like that created, move that thirty-five hundred dollars over from this budgeted here in the sheriff's office over to the jail.
For one.
That's, but that's next agenda item, yes.
Okay, for only one.
And then, but you want to start paying for all of them right now, I didn't tell this out.
All of them qualified and there's none that qualified.
There's no qual, none of them qualified for three or four years.
Yeah.
I mean, and we can cover that in the next budget request.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the best way to think about it is exactly how it's written, is dual commission. Right, what we're talking about, peace officers who are also correctional officers, right? So, at the moment, that only affects one, uh, one person, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yours, if we don't also take a look at this, you know, in the budget, then we might run into budgetary issues, but. But what I think the sheriff is saying is, at the moment, this could not affect the budget, except for that one, that one person where we'll have to line item transfer from sheriff's to jail.
Not decrease in or increase in our budget whatsoever, we're just moving a line item from sheriff's department to the jail. For this one person, so nobody else is qualified.
Correct, but that's the next agenda item.
Right, right, right now, listening.
Right now, I'm just trying to get this.
If you've got peace officers qualified to step pay, if you assign them to the jail, you can assign them anywhere you want to.
Did we not have that position available to be assigned during the budget? Because I'm just trying to understand why we didn't have step pay if it was definitely a deputy. Because I thought we went through and did that and.
When we were doing all that, and y'all worked very hard to get all that done, my intentions at that time were not to make any changes. So things came up and, and I made a couple of changes.
Okay, who is the individual going to give this to? Is it the warden? Okay, makes sense, she was a commissioned peace officer, got transferred over to be a warden of the jail, but she's no, no longer receiving the step pay.
I'm just wanting to understand how it's set.
Yeah, now that, to me, that is a fair thing to do, okay. But it's still going to be up to the commissioners of other, that's why I was going to bring it up and make it clear. Leon, you got that?
I do.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve. I can tell him about.
Got a motion, Bruce, to approve. David, I'm pretty sure that was David, okay, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Thank you, gentlemen, that does pass. Now we need to play for this rascal, okay, so with number twenty-one, considering transferring budget funds in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars from the sheriff's. Step pay line item to the jail, creating a new line item in the jail budget. Let's say in the court.
Make a motion to approve, sir.
You got a motion, Bruce, second Greg, to approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next, our motion carries.
Two, thank you, Sheriff, you pulled up a pin up here, so I won't be clicking. And then, I, I see Stephanie's left, but if Harold ever wants to transfer Stephanie to sheriff's department, she's done a jam of jobs for her. She knows about towers, ballistic tests, vehicles, all kinds of stuff, she'd be an asset.
Free handle, you bet.
Thank you.
Don't think you're going to steal her from Harold.
I heard that.
We ain't going to give you that much money to get her.
Alright, number twenty-two, Mr. C, uh, considering approved, earns law. To provide legal services in the form of drafting the legal contract for the Northwest Annex Project, we had the same, uh, group. Well, I mean, we've had the opportunity to work with this group, but this isn't the same group you used on the sheriff's conference.
Promptize the deal, can't work with her, Bristow, or R F E, handle the contract, negotiate the contract. But since this was placed on the agenda, I've noticed something on here I'd like to discuss with the county attorney, so I'll be able to do it, I might go to the table.
Okay.
Make a motion to table, number twenty-two, sir.
David, a motion for Bruce, second Greg, all favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll give you a shout, Harold.
You what?
Oh, I, I just said I'll give you a shout, figured it out.
I do.
Alright, number twenty-three, Mr. C, considering approved recommendation to award bid number twenty-two oh six, D rock, road material.
Okay, about a month ago, uh, well, maybe a little half ago, uh, one of the commissioners was having trouble getting some of this road material that we had bid out. Uh, and I think that happens occasionally these days. So we, uh, talked to, uh, various vendors that we already use, we, he has something called D rock that we had never bid out. So we went out for bids, uh, received three responses. From Waller County Asphalt, Vulcan Construction Materials and Texas Materials Group. Stephanie had all three of the tenders samples, we had all the commissioners and their, uh, foremen come by and look at it. Uh. All of them, they didn't know which one was which, but all of them picked the same one, you know, they decided to use it, but it didn't sound like any of them actually wanted to use it, but. This is, this is an alternate, if for some reason they get out, they can't get something they're buying, this will give them an alternate that they could use.
Correct.
Uh, Vulcan Construction was the lowest bidder, uh, for all precincts. And, uh, like I said, nobody, I didn't know they would ever use it, but, uh, I'd go ahead and review it just in case.
If anybody does, wants to use it, uh, I make a motion to approve. The award bid to Vulcan for D rock.
I've got a motion to approve Vulcan, need a second.
Nobody want to use that stuff.
You don't like D rock or something, what's up here, Bill?
Doing a consideration to one of the other commissioners.
David, you don't like.
Your question, Leon?
I went over and, uh, looked at that rock and I really, I wasn't real happy with it, it had a lot of fines in it. I'm gonna, it's not, it's not going to hold up very well.
So it's up to y'all, I mean, you don't have to use it.
Approve, approve this here.
But is that all the, uh, all the contractors we had to come in with the, with the bids on this D rock?
Those are it, those three.
Alright, well, I'm going to second this.
Okay, we don't have to use it. You know, we don't have to use it still.
Okay, now we got a second. Barely, uh, we got a motion for Bruce, second Leon, to approve Vulcan, uh, the warning this contract. Uh, to load us up with D rock. Yeah. If we need, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-four, uh, land barber group, considering approved, bids on lit tax properties, we have three from, uh. El Frige, bid number eleven, five, nine, seven, three for thousand. Bid number thirty-four, six, nine, six for thousand. Free. Frige is sixty-eight, sixty-two, uh, bid number, and it's for thousand dollars.
Uh, I'd like to explain on this one, of these three items here. All three of these items were brought to me Thursday mornings from the mayor of Dayzetta. They all have abandoned houses, they are owned by the county. He wanted something to do with these, he had already reached out. To an individual that guarantees that he can have these structures demolished in the next ninety days, so I, uh, sent it to land barber. For him to just purchase land and tear the buildings down, since these have been on the tax for quite a long time.
You got a motion for Leon?
Sir.
Second Greg. Approved, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Probably get torn down in the next ninety minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, number twenty-five, from Fisher Wilson, uh, considering approved, their local group, twenty Liberty County Precinct Forward, C and K enough. Uh, for the same reasons as noted for any interruption between the county and a government entity.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce, second Greg, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next, a motion carries. Number twenty-six, uh, Mr. Poston, consider it take action regarding removal and replacement by platinum copiers. Of copiers from various county departments for executing contracts. Andy, I know we have a, uh. Executive session on this, would you want to move an executive session first and come back consideration of this last item?
Yes, I ask who we do, sir.
Okay, alright, need a motion to move an executive session.
Make a motion to go on the executive session, Dave.
Got a motion for Bruce. Greg, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Now, ten. Ten forty-five. Uh, have the executive session back in regular session, two items consideration. Uh. Actually, the number one item pertains to item number twenty-six. Consider take action regarding removal, place, of having copiers, of copying various county executed contracts. We did have some dialogue with Mr. Poston, uh. And I believe what we're looking at is, uh. and I believe what we're looking at is, uh, give Mr. Poston the authority to negotiate with platinum, platinum copiers, resolve the issue.
Make a motion for Matthew Poston to negotiate a contract from the old contract to the new contract, if need be.
With platinum copiers.
With platinum copiers, I'm sorry.
Alright, got a motion for Bruce, new second. Okay, a motion, uh, second to Leon, all voters say aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, motion for Bruce to adjourn, new second. Greg, all voters say aye.